Especially especially at the gym. It's the gym is closed.
Oh, oh.
So even in the mornings, there might be a group that goes down to the middle school.
Yeah.
People lifting weights.
Right. There's nothing. Yeah, that affects it even more. Yeah. How long is that after cure?
It's when I said.
This week? Oh. Oh, so a couple of weeks.
A week, so.
Wow.
The live show is going, so. Whenever you're ready to start. Yeah, well, it's still five twenty-nine on my computer.
Yeah. We use one two. That's what the final one. Clear, close, a lot of this. Except on the prime time. And next thing.
They do something different in the middle school.
Oh. So we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is. This is to keep the. Uh. Something we have to have company in this.
Oh, gotcha.
That one we do a different.
Yeah.
All right, I have five thirty, so I will call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda as presented. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. I'll let you decide who got that one, Kendra. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same. Motion carried. Next item, five school board basics. Number one, put students first. Number two, follow the law in your own policy. Number three, respect the chain of command. Number four, base decisions on shared objective information. And number five, operate in the public eye. Moving on to item number three, the consent agendas items. Kendra has handed out one last sheet.
It's mostly the credit cards came in, so they're mostly just regular expenses.
I don't know if anybody has any questions on the other consent agenda items. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to item four, visitors. I do not see any and no forms have been filled out, so we'll move on to administrative reports. Starting with the principals, Mr. DeZale.
It's up to you. Yeah, it doesn't matter. I'll go first since he hasn't done one of these before, so. If that works.
That works.
Okay. If you get a chance, can you? Put the end of year one on there. All right, so kind of my end of year report wrapping things up, and if I would summarize it in one thing, it was a great year overall. Things went really well, yes, like in a year to year, you have your normal things, but I thought this was. In the grand scheme of things, and overall the last few years, a really great year, and I was very thankful to our staff and students and community for that, so. Starting out traditionally, we have with attendance here and kind of left it here over the last six years and kind of see. And like I've said before, the bar graphs are a little bit deceptive when you're looking at a line talking about a percent. Per line there and looking at big dips overall and so forth, but I I put it there, yeah, we've hovered kind of right around where we've been over the last three, four, or five years. And this year we were up not quite a whole percent, but about nine tenths of a percent. But when you're talking students, just in one building, two hundred plus and being up one percent, that's roughly student a day. So a little bit of a significant impact there. Does that mean we've made big strides and solved issues? No, we still talk about the same things. If you could scroll down to the, yes, that page. Specifically at the high school, I kind of categorized what we've done the last few years, but excessive absences by students. And so forth, and that was a big discussion at the end of the year, two years ago, and that was in a lot of places. And even last year into this year, yes, you can see that it's slightly down. I don't think that means that it's solved by any means. That can simply mean just because of some students maybe that we struggled with before have either exited or graduated from previous years. And sometimes you get that with younger students again. That's still a discussion. Even though I had twenty plus, we had several students, I haven't categorized this before, but in the high teens, which I still think is up there. And so discussions on what to do to work together to get them to come here, and that's happening all the time. And it's not just here at Sibley O'Sheen, it's all over. It's a common topic when I go to principal meetings. Among the, not every month, but quite often we talk about these things. And some have outliers that they have their fifties or sixty, seventy plus absences a year with a student, and we didn't have that this year. So that kind of sways and goes, but overall it was a good year. Like I said in the report, I would say our chronic absenteeism at the high school is slightly down. And a small majority makes a big difference overall in our impact here. And we had a good percentage that had three or less absences. The one thing when I run the end of the year report to keep in mind with that is that's absences for any reason. So, because when I do the end of the year report, I can't factor out this school one. So if someone was gone like to a state event for a day, that would be an absence. So if you even factor in kids that were only absences they had maybe were school related, I would. I would think we would have a fair number that had close to perfect attendance for the year as well, which is a good thing to celebrate, so. I put below here, some of these are the same as years past, some of these are different, but excuses. I said these are not excuses, the reality, what we're dealing with, but we talk about this all the time between Amy Else and myself and others in the office. It doesn't mean we have the right answer, but it's a continued conversation, and I think we've grown in trying to handle these in the last few years. Like I said before, many schools deal with it. The problem with high absences is oftentimes there's a direct correlation with being at risk or academically struggling. Many, not all, but many of the kids that have high absences are on our down list or maybe have one or more Fs. And many of the kids that do fail subjects often have more than one absence. I'm not saying they're all our highest, but many of them miss a lot of school. And that's a big cause of, because they don't make the work up when they're not here. So that goes hand in hand with academic performance. And it's no different than a job. I think you've all been with people who probably have been absent from work. And some do a better job than others of making up for their work when they're gone and the whole that leaves, so the same thing happens here at school. An excuse versus, this has been more of a recent conversation, and we talk about parents making sure you call them in. And discretion of when do we say it's unexcused, especially when the parent keeps calling them in and they're not feeling well. We went to the doctor and said stay home two days. Well, I know, but you're already eighteen. And working with, when you bring that hammer down, but supporting them to get them to come. And I don't have the answer to that, but that's something we talk about and kind of has to happen case by case, so those things continue to happen. So overall, small population really is the growing tend, trend, excuse me, concern here. That a small population of our students have these excessive absences that we spend a lot of time in. It's not like it's an epidemic that fifty percent of our kids are missing. No, it's not, but there's a small percentage that miss a lot. And it takes a lot of time and energy in the office and from teachers as well, because they're going, what's going on here? I got them missing twenty times, and that's a frustration to them as well, so something we're still working through. At the middle school, kind of same conversations, not as much on that, but overall, things went well. I think overall the total percentage there at the middle school this year was ninety-five percent roughly, if I remember right, so. And similar conversations there as well. If you can scroll down to the past feeling page there, James. So if I had to summarize this, besides repeating everything that's listed there, in the first semester, just running a report of how many students failed the course out of the total number of students we had at that time. And why is the number of students at the end of the semester and first and the end of the second semester different? It's because some students leave during the year, some join, and so there's the difference there. It's who was enrolled here as of the last day of the first semester and the last day of the second semester. So at the end of the first semester compared to the last year, we were down, had less students overall as a percentage fail a first semester class. That was slightly up at the end of the year. It was up, but it wasn't up a whole lot, so I wasn't overly concerned with that. But those are things that we continue to have, and I think the trend is the right way. The thing that we continue to have the discussions on is, okay, when they're failing, why did they fail? Well, one of the big reasons I just said is absences, and what are some of the other reasons? And what can we do to support to get them here, number one, and then when they're here, helping them out. But also remember it's a helping hand and not doing it for them, because sometimes in life we do need that kick in the rear end. And sometimes a fail is a good thing because it gets them on the right track, sometimes not, so that's a conversation we have as well. In the middle school, at the end of the second quarter, they go by quarters, so I put that there because that's roughly the end of the semester. At the end of the first semester, second quarter, we only had nine out of a hundred and two in the seventh and eighth grade fail, which was down. It was slightly up at the end of the year. There were there were various reasons for that. Some of that, we had some maybe senioritis. When you're in middle school already at the end of the year and not completing some work that hit them in the butt. So I think some of those issues were resolved at the end of the year. Just some highlights of things I've done professionally in the last year. Obviously, SAI updates, brief correspondence. We went to the SA Administrator Retreat in August, so thank you for allowing us to do that, and we're planning to go next year as an administrative dream between myself, Kent and Casey. Looking forward to that. Keeping updated on JMC, that's our student information system. Constantly different updates there and how we submit things and grading, especially at the high school level. I was heavily involved with the Northwest AAAs, the RPP, so that's the. RPP is the Regional Planning Partnership, but where we get our Perkins and other monies for our CTE. Areas, shop, ag, family consumer science, and business. We get some additional monies to buy products that we normally wouldn't through that, so I'm involved in the executive committee and distributing the funds to the area schools with that. Going to the monthly principal meetings, that's always a great way just to kind of talk through things and see, you know, we're banging our head against the wall. Why do we have this problem? And almost every time you realize everyone else is having the same problem too. Maybe they had that problem last year more so than this year or so forth, and sometimes it's a problem we've had in the past and we're not dealing with right now, but they're really struggling with. So most of the time, more often than not, you get great ideas out of that, because most of the schools are in the same boat or similar situations. And then the spring, I completed the tenant licensure, I had the courses done, but applied and got that taken care of this spring, so. Our staff attendance rate at the seven through twelve level, overall, our rate on student contact days was ninety-three point two percent. And our goal is ninety-five, so that wasn't achieved. I will add, I asked Twilight to look this up for me. Out of the whole year, we had a substitute at the high school level for all but eight days of the school year. And yes, that's alarming, but you also have to remember we had someone that was sick pretty much the entire first semester and started missing from day one of the school year. And we had three maternity leaves, so I think when you factor that in, we did overall pretty well. And like I've said before, if we met our goal of attendance every day at ninety-five percent, that would still mean every day on average, we have someone out of the building. Because we have more than twenty staff members, we're in the mid thirties, so even ninety-five percent means we're still probably getting a sub in the building each day, roughly speaking. And so the number of staff at the meeting, the district goal, excuse me, out of the thirty-four that I observed this year, twenty-three of them met that at ninety-five percent or higher. So roughly two thirds of our staff met that. And then the attendance rate on our PD days, and I just did this through the Wednesdays that we had off and any full days. So overall, our rate on those PD days was ninety-five percent. The number that met a hundred percent, remember you missed just one day and you don't meet, it was just under half, sixteen of them met it. But if, I know this isn't a goal, but I would point this out, that if you look at those that missed just one PD day or less, that jumps up to twenty-eight, which I think is a really good sign of being committed here, so. Before I go on to discipline, anyone on greeting, attendance, or the things that I've discussed so far? Okay. So the discipline reports, I kind of, when you want to see where I got my numbers from and so forth, did a screenshot of them like I've done in the past. If I have to summarize them overall this year, they're down compared to last year in terms of the number of referrals and things like that. You can see some of the problem behaviors sent out, like James has, and the first one there is for five day attendance letters. Getting back to what I talked about, that we're dealing with that as we can and sending out five day warning letters and so forth like that. That's some of the referrals right there. So overall, it was down. More attendance letters were sent this year, just in an attempt to keep up on that and making that decision when we can. A lot of high school referrals of sitting in the office actually comes from attendance, retardies, skipping classes, things like that. Most aren't from just belligerent behaviors. Our freshmen compared to last year were up a little bit, but our juniors were down. But our, excuse me, our juniors were up too, and last year's soft force, we talked about this for whatever reason, that's been a class that have typically had the most referrals. That's getting better, but that's still up, so. I'm pleased with overall progress the high school has made. And when you look at it, the ones that give us the majority, as I was running this the other day and going through the names that had the majority of our referral issues, we're talking less than five percent. I think it was three, when I ran it the other day, three and a half percent or something like that of our students that are really causing the majority of our issues. Unfortunately, it does take a lot of time and it affects a lot of other things, but it it's really a small percent, and the majority of our kids are doing the right thing every day. And that's something we'll just continue to work on, so. Middle school, or no, I'm sorry, I had this how it impacts education, excuse me, and as a result of that, we did not have a lot of kids permanently kicked out of classes or anything like that. We had one student this year kicked out of a class twice and thus removed for the rest of the semester. Due to the situations there, they didn't automatically get an F. They had some alternative arrangements and for privacy reasons, I won't say why. But two years ago, we had six students that were removed from classes because of multiple behavior violations. Last year was one, so that's a good improvement. Because when they're kicked out in high school, you don't get credit for it, and if it's a core class, you got to make it up, so that affects things, so that's good. So we had one class total. I said two years ago, we had six kids, but those six kids amounted to fourteen classes they were removed from. Some of them were removed from multiple classes, so that that's a good thing, okay, significant improvement. So the biggest thing why I bring that up is because discipline keeps kids out of the classrooms. You don't, in high school, you don't get that credit. It's not like you repeat the grade. You got to make that credit up at some point, and so we don't want that. And like I said before, there's a correlation between students and the amount of referrals they get or removals and their grades. So something that we're aware of. We struggle with those that are getting failing grades and then a number of absences, like I've said, and I highlighted there again to reiterate that point, and I don't have the answer, but it's something we continue to work with, so. At the seventh and eighth grade level, probably the biggest thing there is just due to absences and tardiness. It's one of those things, and I'm not throwing anyone under the bus here, but. Getting to class in seventh and eighth grade and that if you're not there right at the bell, that you get a tardy, that's a big adjustment for them at the beginning of the year. We do that in fifth and sixth, but we're really strict on it in seventh and eighth, and that's just something that happens so that we don't struggle with that in high school. And then coming to school late, kind of for the first time, instead of putting that on mom and dad's shoulders, yes, we call the parents, but make the kids accountable for that, because that doesn't always happen and rightfully so at the lower levels. So when they get to seventh and eighth grade, that's one of the big things is that they're accountable for when they're gone. Overall, the referrals were up unfortunately this year for some other poor behaviors as well. Kent can attest to that a little bit, especially at the lower levels in the middle school, so many of those were tardy and handled by our staff. But there were some other like disrespect behaviors and things that we've had to work on down there, probably more so at the middle school this year than in any of other buildings for a variety of reasons. We try to be, work with the students so that they don't miss class when they have to make up time, but the thing that's unique is in middle school is you don't drive yourself, right? If I got to come in early, mom has to bring me, dad, or brother, sister, versus in high school, they take care of that themselves, so we try to work with them on that, so. Yeah, that kind of summarizes the middle school stuff. And so one of the things I added, just some concerns and points moving forward. I think one of the big things that we have as a district moving forward is staffing, and this isn't a, I've said this several times here and I put it in writing. This isn't a Sibley O'Sheen problem, it's a problem affecting Sibley O'Sheen, but this is all over in terms of just staffing and filling open positions. I know of a district, I talked to last week, we are still working on filling a high school math position. So I was calling some other schools that had the openings, not to see what they have, but just to get ideas. I talked to one school, they still had four openings at the high school level for staff that they have not filled yet. They thought they would have two taken care of for sure, but they were going to start the year too short as of right now. We're at one. There's several other schools that have the same math opening that we do. I'm pointing that out not to, you know, pass the blame, but just show the reality. And that's in Northwest Iowa, and we're a lot better than some of the areas of the state. But starting the year short staffed, we did last year, there's the potential that could happen again this fall. We've had some plans on how we're going to cover that. Not ideal, but we'll make the best do of it, and that's why I put the math instructor. But I think in the areas of last week, there were five high school math openings, five different districts advertising it, and that's just Northwest Iowa. So that's right there. These openings, it trickles down to not only teaching staff, but our paras, kitchen, custodians, bus drivers, and that just puts more work on others. And it's not unique to education either. I know that's in other industries that some of you have seen too. But it's becoming a real reality affecting education and how we serve our students. And I just think that's going to entail, if something changes, that's going to continue in education, so just to be aware of. And and I stress, because I've had people ask, what's our problem? Why are we short staffed? What, it's a problem affecting Sibley O'Sheen, but it's not a Sibley O'Sheen problem in terms of we did something wrong, they're not coming here, going somewhere else. The reality is it's all over, and that's a very common topic, I'm sure at your level too. I haven't talked to you about this, but at our principal meetings, that's another thing that we talk about, and I'm guessing the superintendents have as well, but that's a common topic. And how to fill that or even get to October and we're still short staffed, how did you guys cover your, your open positions and things like that? So that's something that continues to happen. Enrollment, just as a rural school district, our proper population is decreasing across the state and in economically rural areas. In the future, I think that has the potential to impact us and and we will adjust and be flexible with that, but that's just something to be well of, aware of, and it's the reality all over, so. I hate finishing on negatives, so, but the report kind of summarizes those things, so I just said, and this isn't inclusive, but some highlights from the year, and I am going to read through this. But we had many, many students excel academically. I think every time we had a sports season done, almost every high school. I was going to say every, but I didn't run the list, but I I think almost every high school team, if not all, received academic recognition in some way for academic excellence. And I think that's an awesome testament to our students. The girls' country team is placed at state, and they had several medalists. Our marching band was once again outstanding and performed very, very well and and given with a new band instructor, I thought they did outstanding. The choir had a new director and had a phenomenal year across the board, and very pleased with how things went. We had a wrestler qualify for the state wrestling tournament. Our girls' basketball team was in the top of the conference and went to the state tournament. Our speech seasons, we had someone make all state speech and overall had many place one. We had students qualify for all state band. Once again recognizes the best community for music education. The fall musical was awesome, especially with some new staff and just seeing all the kids and the different involvement that you get to see that maybe it's kids doing things you normally don't get to see them do, but that was really fun to see. Our track teams, I think both had outstanding spring seasons here, several events qualified for state, and we even took home some medals. We had, by my count, two state champs and six medals overall. Continued growing our intervention program in the middle school and just how to better support our students in the seventh and eighth grade level, and those discussions will continue moving forward, obviously. Our initial ISAP results appeared promising. We'll have to wait for overall, but we were pleased with that to start. And I just think we have awesome and great students here at Sibley O'Sheen, and me personally, I think I'm just blessed with a wonderful caring staff, and I couldn't do it without them, so it was a great year.
All right. Any comments, questions? All right, let's move to the elementary and lower level of the middle school. Mr. DeZale?
Yeah. Mr. Craig, you want to put that up there? I think you're working on it, yeah. So maybe the the difference in levels that we cover, but mine happens to be a little more fancy, I think, but. So yeah, just my end of the year report. The first few slides kind of highlight the demographics of the preschool through sixth grades. You can kind of see, the first one is the enrollment and kind of see as Stan talked about, kind of a declining trend there. We were able to stay consistent from last year to this year in terms of PS through six enrollment, so that's a positive. And hopefully we can continue to stay consistent there. As we move forward through some of the demographic information, gender, ethnicity, subgroups, just some interesting things for for us to explore and dive into, to know how we best meet the needs of our students. And so those subgroups, I just feel are very interesting to inform our decisions moving forward. The thing that really stuck out to me for our subgroups and for the the demographic information overall was the percentage of low SES, low social economic status, which would be our free and reduced lunch numbers. If we look at two hundred and twenty out of three hundred and ninety-one total enrollment for preschool through six, you're talking sixty-six percent come from lower income households. And so to meet them where they need to be is, it it can be a challenge, but like Stan highlighted at the end, I I know we have the correct people in place to make sure we meet our kids. And some of the following information will highlight that we're doing as best we can to to meet those needs, so. Moving on then is our attendance total. Again, kind of a flat trend line there. We were up about a half a percent from last year overall, so we were just short of the ninety-six percent. The seven year high was just short of ninety-seven percent, so we're we're right in that range like we have been. That's something that I would like to continue to work on for myself is just that communication of, and and working and teaming with families to make sure we're all on the same page. And and as Stan said, that attendance is so important for our students to to be here, so. The chronic absences, you know, thankfully that as you move to the right of that chart, that number of students goes down. As we get higher in attendances, issues and absences, so again, something that we can continue to work with and continue to work with families on as well. The next one, you know, we talked a little bit about the board goals and the staff attendance and how we can best support students. We hire staff for a reason. Those are the most qualified and the best people for that job, so the, I'm thankful that the board has placed an emphasis on that in terms of the board goal. We understand that life happens, but for them to be here is is as important, so just kind of a summary of overall both teachers and support staff of of attendances there. It was interesting for me to compare kind of the report from this time last year and see how those numbers compared. They're very, very consistent. I'll talk a little bit about a summary of absences information here coming up, so. In terms of board goals, the overall staff attendant rate on contract days was just over ninety-three percent. So we did not quite meet that goal overall, but we did have sixty percent of the staff meet that ninety-five percent attendance board goal. In terms of our professional development, there was just short of ninety-seven percent attendance, overall attendance rate. We only had forty-six percent meet the the goal of a hundred percent attendance and sixty-six percent meet or attend, just missing one. If you kind of flip to the next one. Just some some highlights, not excuses, but explanations. We had two staff that had children during the year, so explaining for absences there. We have two staff that shared that they are expecting during the year, so yes, they're missing, but exciting times nonetheless for that family component. It's one of the things that really drew me to Sibley O'Sheen was the familial com- component of the the discussions, and so I think that's an important piece as well. And so, yeah, it's it's a very good thing. And four staff that had either major surgeries or something, two, major surgeries to either themselves or to family members that they needed to take care of, going back to the the family. And then we had seven staff that had serious sickness either themselves or with an immediate family member in terms of COVID and cancer. And some of those other types of things that you don't wish on anybody, but want to place an emphasis on taking care of ourselves. And so just kind of an understanding of why some of those numbers were the way they were. So trying to meet people where they're at and work with them as best we can. Kind of moving on, our discipline and and referral information, Stan touched on this a little bit, but I think especially in the five, six level. That disrespect and and disrupting the classrooms, as you can see, are are way higher than the rest, and I think that was a common theme and something that we can continue to work on, and we have had lots of conversations about already, and, okay, so how do we, how do we move forward? Where do we go from here? And so it's it's on the forefront of all of our minds, not only for what's best for our students, but also how do we support staff in supporting students there, so. And then the disciplinary action breakdown, tried to do my best, and it's something we can be better at, but always continuing to include the family. The family, the parent contact, always including the family as much as I can in some of those. One thing I will say with this is our student information system, JMC, allows us to list two separate disciplinary actions. And so some of these breakdowns, some of these actions. And so some of these um breakdowns, some of these actions breakdowns come from one referral where I will have a conference with a student and I will contact the parents. So it's, so some of these are from one incident, but separate actions. So that's why that number may not necessarily match up, so that's why I put them as percents there. Kind of moving over to our assessments. The thing in the next, I won't read them overall, but in the next three slides, a thing that I was super proud of was we are continually stressing our academic excellence at SO. Um, we are above the state average in almost all of our assessments, and I believe all of them are above the state average. Um, maybe not where we feel like we need to be, but um definitely a point of pride to um highlight and emphasize the um academic tradition of excellence here. So again, I won't read those for you. You can kind of look through them as you scroll through them. Um, in terms of the ISAS results, the the like Stan said, the preliminary numbers are kind of listed for you here, very promising. Do we have room for growth? Absolutely, but um uh it's something that we can be proud of. Um, already are, excuse me, our I ready results are our second math assessment. And so um each one of those assessments, the fall, the winter, the spring assessment, we assess three different times, and they're they're broken into three different kind of categories. The on one and two plus would be in terms of grade level and proficiency. So the percents that you see there are the number of students that are in the green column on grade level during that assessment period. The yellow is one grade level below, and then the two plus are two or more grade levels below. Um, the thing that I want to point out there is the the growth moving from left to right in every single grade level. Um, you'll notice the numbers in the red decrease and in the green increase. And so just goes to show um that our staff's, uh our staff is doing the right thing and continuing to make progress with our kids. Um, and then our ISAS results, again, maybe not where we want them to be, but definitely headed in the right track. And same with science. Then we also like to include a kind of a summary of our tutoring program and the effects that it has on kids and um improved academic performance. So first one is just sheer number, how many students were tutored from each grade level. And then the next one is um growth of students. So this is um growth goals, not proficiency goals, just growth goals. So while like in sixth grade there, we had three students that were in tutoring. Um, none of them met their year growth goal, but they were all, and that's why I put that note in there, they were all already at the proficient level. So when you get to that that higher level, that that year's growth, that year's worth of growth is harder to hit because they were proficient already last year. So um regardless, the the percentage of students who were tutored that met the growth, the growth goal was fifty-six percent as opposed to forty-one percent of students who did not go through the tutoring program. So definitely has the benefits there. Um, and then just kind of in summary, like Stan said, like to try and finish up on positives. Um, first of all, the transition went well for all new staff, um personally especially. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you to the staff and both experienced and new and returning uh or excuse me, returning and new. Um, I just feel like we had some good things um working for us. So um we had a great year of implementation of our neutering curriculum, not without some speed bumps along the way and some challenges, but proud of the resolve that the staff showed. Um, and the feedback I got at the end of the year was much more positive and moving in the right direction. Um, and it's going to be best for our kids. So um the MTSS process, we spent a lot of time, I've made mention of it in the in these meetings throughout the year, but we put a lot of time into that to know how we can continue to support students at their level. MTSS is multi-tier system of support, so how can we, how can we reach them, whether they're struggling, whether they need to be um gifted or or advanced a little bit? How can we continue to to support them no matter where they're at? I made mention of it throughout the slides, but the assessment scores looked good at first glance. We will continue to use those assessments and that data to um guide decisions and discussions about what's best for SO. Um, and we will continue to place students first and trying to meet the needs of all students. Our our frequent flyers, as I like to call them sometimes, but also the the ones who fall through the cracks maybe sometimes because they're doing what they're expecting them to do. And like Stan said, most often that's a higher percentage. Um, but when a a small number of kids takes a majority of your time, we need to focus on those kids that are also doing what we expect them to do and continuing um to get the most out of their education here at at Sibley O'Cheaton. So and then kind of piggybacking off of that, um what can we look forward to and continue to work on in uh next year? Um, I think the culture and climate and integrating new staff as part of the teams and making them feel welcome is going to be an important piece to it. Again, that was part of what drew me here, and so I want to make sure that that's continued um to be prioritized as we go. We're going to continue to work on the growth of a of our amplify in our ELA curriculum, ELA as in la- English Language Arts. We will continue to look at number three and four, kind of go together, that intervention process, that MTSS process. And and I really would like to focus on our tiers of instruction. So what that means is what is our curriculum for the majority of all of our kids, for all of our kids? And then if the kid is struggling for the next fifteen percent, twenty percent, um what do we have that's research based that we can continue to help kids and put them on the track where they need to? And then for that top five percent that are really struggling and need the extra supports and, okay, so what does that curriculum look like? And so just continuing to refine that process. Um, and then like I talked about, just using the data to guide our decisions, our and guide and inform our decisions and and where we're going, and then finally continue to place students first. Um, we are in the student business and the relationship business, and so making sure that our priorities stay where they need to stay. So.
Good. Any comments, questions?
Thank you for those reports.
Yeah.
That was good to see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your leadership in our buildings.
All right, moving on to Mr. Craig.
So spending a lot of time this month getting ready to pass the baton and and uh help Stan get ready to uh take over the the role here. Um, been sharing a lot of documents and been um uh having a lot of conversations and just being available um for him. Otherwise, as we've shown you throughout the year, we continue to be in a great financial position. There are some things with Save and Pebble tonight that there's some new projects on there that wouldn't have been possible without some of the some of the uh updates that have come in, and so we're looking at those. But yeah, I think it it doesn't get said enough that um both our principals do an outstanding job and um we appreciate their leadership. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All right, moving on to uh board committees, policy, finance, facilities. And moving on to recognition of excellence.
Okay, so our state track results that were brought up earlier. Uh, Keaton Elser with tenth place in the shot put, a personal record. Uh, Matty Marco, eighth place in the three thousand meter run with a personal record and and eighth place medal, sorry, I got the eighth place medalist medalist also in the fifteen hundred meter run uh and another personal record. Alejandro Bernal, twenty-second place in the thirty-two hundred meters, the boys at four by eight hundred meter relay finished in fifteenth with a season best time for them. Uh, David Poppen, Kail Rider, Dawson Cracus, and Ben Byers involved in that. The girls' distance medley relay uh were the third place medalists and finished with a new school record of four minutes thirteen point six seconds. It's Elena Wingate, Olivier Hinch, Zoe Ackerman, and Madison Brower. Elena finished in ninth place in the four hundred meter hurdles. Uh, the girls' four by four hundred meter relay finished in eleventh place. It was Brita Wasman, Elena Wingate, Madison Brower, and Zoe Ackerman. Ben Byers, in his first trip to state, finished in the seventh place as a medalist in the sixteen hundred meter run, and Madison Brower uh with two state championships and her second championship in the eight hundred meter run and then, of course, in the fifteen hundred meter run. So we congratulate all of the track participants on an outstanding season. And then just this last week, Elena Wingate also notched her five-hundredth strikeout in varsity softball. So congratulations to Elena. That is it.
Good. Moving on to IASB update, um I really don't have too much. I know they're transitioning. Their executive director um for the past several years um is retiring and she's transferring leadership roles over to DT McGee, who I believe is very familiar in the state of Iowa with um being superintendent at a couple of different places.
He was the head of the Board of Educational Examiners for a while, and then he went to Norwalk and has taken this position.
Yep. Um, I've heard great things about the choice. Not being on the board anymore, I don't have a lot of other things to add, but I think IASB is in very capable hands from what I hear with DT um taking over, so. Moving on to new business, consider approval of district insurance policy.
And Tom Waitsman is here to uh give us some information about the policy and uh renewal for twenty-three, twenty-four with EMC. Hold up, Tom.
Need a place to sit up for a please.
Sure.
And I don't know, I didn't see the rest of the agenda. Stan had referenced now ending on a good note. I hope this isn't your last one. Well, you get one more. And just so you're not confused, um the presentation, I've got an FNIC. I have sold by agency and FNIC is taking over as of seven one, which is your beginning of your renewal. So I will be working with them. They will all be moving to my building, so we're all as as one. So I hope I got enough of these. I did bring a couple of extra. Make sure here. If I could maybe get you guys to share one.
Sure.
That would be. Make sure this isn't the one I shared it on. The opening year packet, their inside.
Oh, you do have an actual.
Is an explanation of of the inside left jacket. The insurance market is really hard, especially right now, underwriting. Whole host of different topics there, losses. Everything that's going on is really created a very, very tough market, which is why it's been so difficult to get prices back from EMC because they've been working very hard and a lot of things have been changing. So if you go over to the next page there, it's got a list of all the affiliations with FNIC. And I also placed a card in there, as you know, it's Heritage Financial. I haven't gotten a new one yet, but that cell number is still, will stay consistent. So to go over the few changes that we've got with, that we're expecting to see and are seeing with EMC and with Chester. Um, coverage in all the buildings, which is because of the market and is moving up to a ninety percent of replacement cost value. Um, one thing we do have to go over and approve here, I've got the listing of it here, we'll look at that in a bit, is the valuations for the buildings that we have to review and decide, you know, and have to have a signature to approve those valuations. They have gone up, consequently, the prices will go up along with the hard market. We are already getting, so we're going up on both both phases. But that's moving to a ninety percent of a replacement cost value, which to me is not necessarily a bad thing, but the price tag is going to be kind of alarming. So we see that uh due to this, we're gonna, we're overall, we're going to see right at about a twenty-five percent increase from where we were a year ago. However, there's some caveats to that. If you look on the top of the page there, EMC has put our deductible up from twenty-five hundred dollars for the middle school and high school building to a fifty thousand dollar deductible for wind and hail. That's obviously a price tag that's pretty hard to take. Um, for Franklin, they've gone to twenty-five thousand dollar deductible for wind and hail. So when we say a twenty-five percent increase, that's factoring what we're looking at as normal. But I've also priced a buy down deductible so that in, that would be in addition to what we've ever paid before. So that would be a choice that we're going to review as well. Um, and it should that doesn't have that there, but we do have, the the buy down is down to a ten thousand dollar dollar value for wind and hail for both bill, both complexes. So God forbid something happened that's a little bit easier to take and and the price tag isn't that terrible, but that's in addition to what we've been paying in the past. So along with our twenty-five, twenty-four and a half or twenty-five percent increase, that's in addition to that. The excess liability that EMC has always contained within their package has been a five million, and then we had the ten million shared. The underwriting for the ten million shared has gone away. They're no longer including that, and they're bob, they're taking our five million down to three million. That's our only option. So I've, we've also got priced an excess liability that shows up there of a five million dollar coverage or twelve or a ten million dollar. So I recommend the ten million because we've been at fifteen million over in the past, for years past, with the five million built into the EMC and the ten, ten million shared. So they're dropping that down to three million. To buy that uh ten million dollar coverage back would be a twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollar premium. The five million is at the seventy-nine, ten. So that's, that's a cost there. And then the cyber coverage has been, we've Kendra, you've been kind of working on that as well, right? With the cyber or that's?
Oh, I felt, I, Tony and I felt that was a question area, yeah.
Of the two million versus a three million at five thousand two thirty, sixty-three or seven thousand six hundred and twenty-six. So the breakdown in coverage, you know, it's the breakdown coverage we've got, you've worked on that with them as well, and that's at twenty thousand. So I don't have enough for everyone. So if you could share, these are the valuations of the buildings and the complexes and everything on s- on property. Now let somebody have, Fels have this too, you can review. But we're just under thirty-four million for the middle school and high school complexes. And Franklin is at ten point three, ten point four, close to ten point four. With all the personal property and everything else there contained, we're at fifty-three million, four hundred and seventy-one, two forty-two. These are the numbers, and those are the buildings that are being up to that ninety percent to value. This is what we'll have to review and sign off on. So can we, anybody else that wants to see this? And the one thing about the excess here too is, you know, we'd had the shared ten million before. So we, that would be our own. So if that wants to factor in, now the premium for the seventy-nine hundred is five million plus the three million that's built into the EMC would leave us at eight, whereas we were previously at fifteen. You know, so even if we take and and do the ten million, we're still two million lesser than what we were the year before. But EMC is getting out of that market completely. They've doc, they bumped them down from five to three and eliminated the the ten million shared. So the aftermarket, we wouldn't share the ten mil- ten million. That would be entirely ours to utilize. The deductible buy down for the complexes for the middle school and high school. would be an additional thirty-six hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is to buy down our deductible on Wind and Hale only down to ten thousand. Otherwise, we're at fifty. Which I feel like is a, not a very good idea. However, that's the only choice we've got. The only choice we've got is to purchase the buy down, E M C. Your new Wind and Hale deductible for this complex is fifty thousand. And Franklin is thirteen hundred and eighty-one dollars to buy down to a ten thousand dollar deductible. Overall, just for the E M C portion is at two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollar renewal. Which is just under twenty-five percent from where we were a year ago. However, that's it, you know, the bu- building valuations obviously are higher than what they were, but they're also not giving us a choice for that. They're bumping us to the ninety percent to value. So. And it should have a breakdown in there, what, what they are by category versus a commercial property, general liability, work comp. That's broken down all in there. Any questions?
Yeah.
I know it's kind of a lot to take on, cause you know, they're, we're being basically told they're leaving the excess market and reducing it from five to three. And leaving us the only option of purchasing out, but when we do, it's on our own. We're not sharing that ten million. But it is two million less than what we had and it's an additional cost.
It's also important to consider that right now, construction, commercial construction is running about three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
I know.
And they're anticipating that to go up to five hundred in the next eighteen months. So they're just, they're, between that and E M C being the other school insurance company that you have to pick from, the other one's in Illinois. There's not a lot of choices. There's not a lot of choices, so you have to have insurance, but the other thing to consider is in, in the wake of disaster or destruction, you're gonna have to pass a bond to cover what insurance won't because you can't get enough insurance to cover everything.
Uh, and you know, the inside of that jacket, that left-hand side, it goes down with all the catastrophes and all the losses and all the reinsurance market and how much that's stiffened up. It's not been a very good year. Then throw in there with that, or it hasn't been a very good eight to ten years for that matter. Um, but when you throw in that, you know, everything's going up, inflation and it's just kinda, if you haven't already noticed it with your personal stuff, you will there as well. Um, insofar as some of our, uh, county mutual markets are drying up and going away because it's too costly for them to purchase reinsurance. And the reinsurance market is also shrinking and the way I liken it back to is, is to nine eleven. When there are few of those reinsurance companies just cease to exist. Everything tightened, everything just kinda went, okay, we don't wanna grow, we don't wanna do anything, and oh, by the way, everything's gonna cost more. So. But my recommendation is to purchase back ten million on the excess liability. Um, along with what E M C's providing, albeit going down from five to three, still leaves us at thirteen million. And we don't have to share the ten million any longer. That's ours and ours only. Um, I feel good about that. Other than the cost, I'm not disappointed, you know, the, the, the coverage levels for the buildings, I think are really good. I don't disagree with that. That's only gonna be okay if something happens. And just carte blanche for them to come across and say, oh, by the way, Wind and Hale's gonna cost you fifty grand. Timeout. So when you called and wanted numbers, I was like, whoa, wait a minute. Like, we need to discuss this. We need to find other options. What else is available? Get that buy down to a, you know, ten thousand is still a far cry more than what we were at at twenty-five hundred. But at least I can make that, make sense of that.
How many times in the last few years have we made Wind and Hale claims? I mean, you have to know what the type area.
Very, our, our loss ratio on that department has been phenomenal. Um, cause obviously when, when we go out and look at the market for this buy down for the deductible, um, we've gotta provide all that. And if they don't like what they see, they're just gonna say, uh-uh, we don't like you. Um, so ours has been very good. Um, I think there was something, and I don't think it was a Wind and Hale, maybe there was an air conditioner unit on Franklin.
We had some wind damage at the football field.
Yeah.
Um, several years ago, otherwise I don't think.
But there wasn't that much. The, the totals on that were not too terrible.
I don't think we've had any.
Um, the only other claim, I don't think it was a Wind and Hale, but it was an A C unit over at Franklin, was a bigger one. But that's again, not Wind and Hale. But, um, God forbid if it ever hits us. You know, ten thousand is gonna be a hard number to come up with as well, but, um, I really don't know that we have much of a choice.
Well, I do know that when E M C came and talked when I was still on the board, their report was all doom and gloom. They had sustained so many losses, starting even before the duratio. But liability wise, and they just said right up front, schools are gonna, your insurance is gonna increase.
Well, you, you know, you kinda get numb to that conversation after a while, cause everybody's using it. And I just, I glaze over when they start talking COVID. It just drives me nuts, but that's all factored into there. All that free money that went out, um, some of these companies came back in, gave discounts on certain programs because everybody's, a lot of people were out of work. Well, all that's part and parcel is coming back and we're seeing that hit the reinsurance market. And I know that there's some very, you know, very good county mutuals out there, friends of mine throughout the state that just might cease to exist. They're just gonna say, sell them out. We don't, if they don't have a big enough book of business, they're not gonna give them the reinsurance, which is gonna force them to move things elsewhere. That's pretty alarming. So.
Tom, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but each school district has a rating that they have and depending on what your rating is, you get better, um, insurance options. Um, I know E M C said that there were some districts, and they've never had to do it before, but there were some districts that had such poor rating, they weren't going to even insure them for the coming year. You know what our, is our rating still pretty good?
Ours is very good. In, insofar as when we had our renewal last year, when I called to inquire about it, the conversation started, oh, you're one of the good ones. It was like, okay, what's that mean for our renewal? And our renewal was actually lesser than what we had all thought last year. So that also gave me pause, thinking, all right, what's the next one gonna look like? That made me a little, and sure enough, you know, as that sheet says, you know, fifteen to twenty-five percent, we're not at twenty-five percent, but we could just as well be based on the additional things we're gonna have to purchase, like the buy down. And then the elimination of the excess liability and having to purchase it back. So when you come right down to it, it's probably gonna be close to twenty-six percent. But when they, when they're counting the fifteen to twenty-five, that's just the E M C portion. They're not counting the portion that we're gonna have to go out to Jester or things, the gaps that they're leaving us with that we've gotta fill somehow. So. Now, from, from a claim standpoint, it's been really, really good. We've had a few little things here and there with the vehicles and transportation. But other than that, you know, work comp is really good.
So if I'm understanding correctly, in years past, we've just been with E M C. Now this year, we're going to have to go outside of E M C to?
Well, we're still with E M C, but we're going outside of that, I E Jester has been a very good resource for us, but they're, they're helping shop the market and fill the gaps for the buy down on the deductible portion. They've always been part of our cyber liability and all that stuff, so it's not, they're not new to us. Um, we just ever had to go to them before for these other resources.
And Jester has a very close relationship with E M C.
Yes.
Yep.
And there's other things that we wished, as, through the course of the year, we, we wish E M C would be a little more forthcoming with and, and certain things, but it's, like you said, Jamie, it's, it's kinda there where the highway, there's really not a lot of places to go. Um, and I don't know that I ever wanna experience that, to be quite honest.
Well, the school districts that have had to have seen their premiums go up, coverage go down.
Over ninety-five percent of the school districts in the state of Iowa are covered through E M C.
Right. So there's districts that have been kicked off and, um, yeah, it's not.
It's ugly.
Not great.
All right. Anybody have questions for Tom? Thank you for the presentation.
If, sorry, if you make the motion, you'll need to keep track of Tom's number, um, for the pre, for the renewal. And not the number that's on the agenda.
That software number would be the same.
I'm sorry, the, the.
Dollar amount.
Yes, yes.
At what point do these schools go self-insure themselves?
I don't have any experience with it and I don't have any knowledge of anything like that. I think it's a da- dangerous proposition, you know. Property wise in and of itself, but more so on the liability side. Um, that could be catastrophic. You know, we all talk about discipline issues and things, you know, you never know what's gonna pop up, God forbid. You know, it, it's just, and Kendra and I had a conversation a couple of times over wanting to do something for the, uh, prom stuff and I was like, well, if these guys can't meet our limits that we have on our, on our general liability, it's out. Cause God forbid something like that happened and that's gonna affect our rating. It's gonna affect everything down the line. So if they can issue a certificate that matches their two, two to four million, fine, but so many of them can't. It's too costly for them to do it. So.
There's districts that are trying to get there with health insurance, but nobody that I'm aware of is considering it for district property insurance.
And it's, it's all cyclical. Eventually it'll come back. Will come all the way back.
From when is it gonna come back from?
But, um, like I said, you know, even your personal stuff, if you haven't noticed it yet, whenever your renewal's coming, you're gonna see it there too, unfortunately. The only thing that we need, everything else right there, if, if it's acceptable, the only thing I need is signature on those, are those, on one of those sheets that have the building values and the valuations on that ninety percent to value.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So, um, and I don't need that now. But if, if, I'll leave that with you. There's a couple there. That's the only thing I need signature on and the rest of it's just, I've got it set up with the underwriter. All I gotta do is give them a call. They issue, they'll issue the renewal. You do have to make a decision, obviously, on the, the buy down and the excess liability. Like I said, that recommendation, I would recommend the purchase of the ten million, then that still leaves us with the thirteen. As opposed to the years past where we had fifteen. Uh, but that's entirely up to you. My recommendation is the ten. But if you do go with the five, then that leaves us at eight and the year before we were at fifteen. So just be mindful.
So we need to note, we need to approve the policy and, uh, they need to decide on the ten million dollar excess liability as well as the, um.
The buy down of the dis, of the.
The deductible buy down.
To ten thousand. For Wind and Hale. Yes, sir.
And the cyber liability.
Yeah.
So we have three different motions then? Or can we do all of them?
I guess.
Because the one renewal rate covers it all, right?
Yes, sir.
Just discuss if you want, if you want to do.
That one renewal rate covers all the E M C. Um, we've already taken care of the, um.
Equipment breakdown.
Equipment breakdown stuff. We've already got that in place.
Okay.
Um, would be the excess liability and the buy down on the deductible.
And the cyber liability.
Yeah, the cyber. You're right.
So basically by approving the two sixty-seven, six ninety, we are approving all of those items?
No, that's the base one and then you have to add on to that.
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the buy down, Kyle, would be in addition to that number.
Okay.
And the excess liability would also be in addition to that number.
So what's, what's the two fourteen then?
That was.
That was last year's number. We didn't have all.
Yeah.
So the total number, the totals combined is what?
That's what Kendra's working on right now.
Okay, so if you went with the, the policy is two sixty-seven, six ninety.
Yes.
If you went with the ten million for excess liability is twelve thousand, five thirty-six, twelve.
Correct.
If you added the deductible buy down for both middle school, high school building and the elementary, the, it's thirty-six, twenty-five for middle school, high school and thirteen eighty-one for elementary.
Correct.
And if you went with the cyber liability, three million coverage for the cyber liability, it's seven thousand, six twenty-six, seventy-eight. And the total is two hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight fifty-eight, ninety.
Going from two ninety, two fourteen to two ninety-two.
No, not necessarily.
The cyber liability was, um, additional to that. It was six thousand.
The two fourteen was just the E M C portion last year.
Yeah.
Not the cyber liability and.
Till roughly two thirty to two ninety-two.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Two ninety-three, somewhere in there. Pretty hard build swallow.
Those were the, I, I gave the amounts of the top coverage, the ten million and the ten million of the excess liability and three million of cyber liability. It would be roughly, um, four thousand less, or the six thousand less for the work options for those, roughly.
But the first option is what's recommended.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's. And that recommendation is because it puts us more closely back to where we were before. Which really hurts because that used to be built right into the E M C policy and they took that away. However, that was shared with other districts at ten million, but, you know, that's no longer in there. And which forces, so that isn't a new additional cost.
What does this new amount of two ninety-two do to our management fund since we've already approved that? Are we gonna be okay?
Um, yeah, I can look what we approved for the budget, I mean.
Yep.
I can look quick.
So the cyber coverage is basically for hacking or, or you want, it's not really, it's covered equipment or the line. It's more for?
It's liability.
Liability, um, hacking, um, students abuse of a, of, you know, liability issues that may come back at school because of the usage of their electro, you know, their computer programs and website and all those things. It's a pretty hot topic, obviously. And something that these kids sometimes have a lot more ability to go around than what we do.
I think Des Moines, Des Moines was shut, shut down and then they returned into school, but they had their online grading and student information system shut down for a week. Someone hacked in and they couldn't figure out how, so they had to do.
So they had to do business.
And they hacked in and steal all their personal information, now we've got problems.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yep. That's what was happening, so they had to go back to trying to grade and turn things in paper and on it.
Grading it should.
But they couldn't do it online anymore cause of hacking.
Grading and and all those things are minor considerations, were all the personal information that could be stolen.
Mm-hmm.
That's where it's gonna hit you, it'll hit you hard.
All right, any other comments, questions for Tom? Or questions before we look at a motion for the recommendation?
Did Kendra find?
I'm just getting logged in, sorry.
Did we have the hack in this year, this past year, the cyber one?
Yeah. Yeah.
Coverage, yeah, that, that's something we've always had with Jester. And the equipment breakdown is something we've always had.
Yeah.
The only thing that's new is the increase that EMC's thrown at us, which is just under twenty-five percent.
That plus.
And then we go out there and have to purchase, buy back for the deductibles and the excess liability, ability or the umbrella. That's, those costs are.
In that account, okay, okay.
But yes, it'll, it'll take a big time.
I mean, is there any concern between the two of you with the additional money that we're gonna need in the management fund? If this motion passes.
We're just gonna have to generate more moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a carryover right now of five hundred twenty-one thousand, I mean, it'll, it, it'll spend a lot of what we're levying, but um, you know, we can levy more the following year.
Yep, okay. All right, any questions, comments? All right, would there be a motion? And is there any specific way that it needs to be worded?
No, I just need a signature on the valuations of the property. If you, you know, and if you need time to review that, I understand, call me, email me, I'll come by and pick it up. But basically, everything in there is bumped, almost ten percent from where it was a year ago. To meet the ninety percent standard that EMC is looking for.
Okay. So really, we don't have a choice.
Oh, I wish you did, no, I wish I did. When I opened it up, said, I hope this is not your last topic, I was serious about that.
I see why.
Yeah.
No, we're not, we're not alone.
No, no, and that's why, you know, when last year was actually a good year for us and we didn't have a, they were, they were dealing with other school districts last year that were going through the very same thing we are now and worse. It's just, you know, you, you hate to make that adage, but it's kind of our term.
Couple months ago, there was a Cherokee was on the news because they didn't say EMC, but the, the insurance company they were going with was not gonna take them. It wasn't necessarily that as a gun thing. And so, and I don't know how they ever came out, but I know there was, the board president was on TV saying, oh yeah, it's not a problem, we're gonna get public insurance no matter what. And I, and I kinda, I knew that wasn't necessarily the case, but I mean, I didn't.
Well, that's, and I tried to get the numbers to you, cause I wanted to get into you guys so you could review it a little bit. And it's, EMC's working overtime and whatever excuse they wanna use, they were understaffed, but everything's going through this process of an increase like this. You know, to get numbers from them is difficult. And then the very first part of that conversation, when you see the numbers is, oh my god. You know, so what can we do to fix this or what can we try to, and unfortunately, uh, the fifty thousand dollar thing about fell off my chair. It's like, all right, we can't live with that, we gotta do something about that, so now we gotta find another avenue for that. And thankfully, our loss ratios are good and our standing is good, or we, that wouldn't even be an option that we could purchase. Cause the underwriting for that's very tight. So. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, thanks, John.
Would there be a motion to move forward?
I'll make a motion to more start approve what uh, Tom presented in as far as the uh.
I think it's important to have the total on there.
Yeah.
Of the, the two hundred ninety-two thousand, eight fifty-eight, ninety.
Yep.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the uh, district insurance policy renewal for the amount of two ninety-two, eight fifty-eight, ninety. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same, motion carried. All right, moving on to consider approval of continuing return to learn plan.
So the return to learn plan has to be in place through the end of the ESR funding so that we can continue to apply for and receive reimbursement for expenses that qualify. There's no proposed changes to the current plan, it just has to continue to be in place. Um, and keep voting on that every six months until the money is finished. So recommend approving the return to learn plan.
Move to approve the continuing true plan.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the continuing return to learn plan as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carried. Moving on to consider approval of instructional support levy resolution and set public hearing date and time.
So this is, this is the first of your two levies that are going to expire in the near future. Um, instructional support levy is a combination of the levy and also income surtax, correct? Kendra?
I'm sorry, what?
Man, I gotta get new material. No, the instructional support levy um, has uh is also income, also income surtax.
It's both property tax and income.
It's both.
Yes, okay, so, um, this expires next year, um the current levy was for ten years and as you vote on that, you have the option as a board to renew it as a board for five years or take it to the voters on election for ten years. Um, the levy already in place just needs to be renewed, so this is information to uh, do the ten year renewal. It requires two meetings and a public hearing, so this is the first meeting tonight. Public hearing will happen before the July board meeting and then at the July board meeting, you would um approve the next resolution to put it on the election.
It's, it's just a five year right now. The board, um, the, it would have to go on the election if it was ten years.
Yep.
So we're doing five?
Five, to, the board is just doing things back.
Okay, so you have the meeting tonight and then you have the public hearing in July and then you have a vote at the July meeting. So somebody just has to uh, read in the resolution and.
Do I make this as a motion or just read this? Whereas the board of directors has approved a financial plan which anticipates the level of funding that will be possible to continue the current level of services and to fund the ongoing programs of the school district. And whereas the board of directors wishes to consider continued participation in the instructional support program as provided in Iowa code sections two five seven point eighteen through two five seven point twenty-seven. And whereas the resolution sets forth the proposal of the board of directors, including the method that will be used to fund the program. And whereas notice of the time and place of a public hearing must be published. Now therefore, it is resolved. The board of directors wishes to consider the continued participation in the instructional support program as provided in Iowa code sections two five seven point eighteen through two five seven point two seven for a period of five years commencing the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The additional funding for the instructional support program for a budget year shall be determined annually and shall not exceed ten percent of the total regular program district costs for the budget year and monies received under Iowa code section two five seven point fourteen as a budget adjustment for the budget year. Monies received by the district for the instructional support may be used for any general fund purpose. Instructional support program funds may not be used to supplant funds used to fund dropout or dropout prevention programs, talented and gifted programs, physical plant and equipment levy purposes, or to cover any deficiencies in funding of special education instruction, instructional services resulting from the application of the special education waiting plan under section two fifty-six B point nine. The instructional support program shall be funded by instructional support state aid and a combination instructional support property tax levy annually upon the taxable property within the school district commencing with the levy of property taxes for collection in the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The secretary is authorized and directed to give notice of a public hearing to be held in the high school library of the district in Sibley, Iowa on July ten, twenty twenty-three at five thirty o'clock PM. Following the public hearing, the board intends to make, to take action on the question whether to consider continued participation in the instructional support program.
Okay, um, I do have, we need a second, but I do have one question before that. Remembering back when we did this instructional support levy, we were required to take it to the voters, is that correct or not correct? Am I remembering that wrong?
If you do the ten year, you have to take it to election, five years the board can do on its own.
We can.
Yeah.
For the full ten percent. Cause I thought before we had a limited percentage that we could do as a board. But if we went with the ten percent, it had to be taken to a vote, I might have that all messed up.
It may have been like initially, but the last
Okay.
two that we've done.
Okay.
Have been.
Just board approved, perfect, okay?
Board approved in a, in a public hearing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Um, I would need a second on this resolution. Jamie, and we will have to, it, it has been seconded, we will need a roll call to uh, pass the motion for the resolution.
Kyle?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passed unanimously. Moving on to consider approval of Sulan Conference cashless ticketing plan and event price increase.
So the, the conference is, is considering taking the path to cashless ticketing with bound. Um, and as a result, would increase gated admission to conference events from six dollars to seven dollars. Um, you'll need to consider whether, how you want me to cast the vote for Sibley O'Chin with uh, Sulan Conference.
So does any more schools pass it?
Yes. So we, it'll be a majority, it'll, it'll pass.
Yep.
So do we need, need that in the form of a motion? Yes.
Okay.
And you said there's still gonna be cash options at the door, right?
It, it depends by, it depends by building, you'll have the ability to use a debit card or a credit card at the door, they'll give you the card for years to do that. Um, you can still buy your tickets ahead of time like we do for tournament things. Um, but some districts will still have a cash option just in case for a couple of years and they'll look to phase that out completely.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion as to whether we're in favor as a district of going to um, the bound program, raising the event costs from six to seven dollars. We need to vote to approve that.
Or not approve it.
Or not approve it, yes. Depending on the motion. We do need a motion either way.
I move to approve the Sulan Conference cashless ticketing with bound.
Is there a second?
As long as the I was gonna say as long as the state does, but it goes more than two.
Fair, I think that's fair. That's, that's a great, that's a big if.
No. Cause they won't.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the cashless ticketing with bound, um, moving gated admission prices from six to seven dollars, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to um authorize the superintendent to cast the vote in favor of moving to the cashless ticketing with bound and with the admission to the events from six to seven dollars. Are there any ques- questions or comments? If not, all those.
So then there, we're still gonna have availability of a season pass or not?
Yes, there'll still be um, activity tickets.
Activity ticket, that's where it's at, we're.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Any discussion about a Sulan Conference activity pass?
Um not really.
I don't, just eliminate, if you bought a pass, you can go to any Sulan Conference game.
It would, it would give us, the, the comment that has come up is that this would give us the opportunity to do that very smoothly there's a conference program with a commissioner or a um, director that um, handles all of the information for the conference that goes into bound. Um, but then who gets the money and how does it get, where does it go and so it's, it's been brought up, but there hasn't been, it hasn't gone anywhere. Not that we can't pass that request alone.
I just think some people probably would like to click the easy button on that one, but.
Possibly something for the future.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Consider approval of iReady purchase.
And you saw the uh, diagnostic report from iReady earlier tonight. Um, the teachers would like to continue to use that uh, for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. So it's recommended to, did you have a new number for that?
It's updated.
Okay, thank you, uh, recommended to approve purchase of iReady um, for twelve thousand, five hundred, two dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the iReady um purchase or assessments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to approve the purchase of the iReady um from curriculum associates in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred, two dollars, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Consider approval of suite three sixty purchase.
And Mr. Zayo has more information on this.
So this, going back to even my report and talking on attendance and, and discipline, um unfortunately, often the ones that miss the most school are getting trouble and one of the things that happens is then, you know, you sit in the office or serve ISS, well, they're often the ones that don't mind sitting in the office cause you can miss class, right? And is that the best way to do that? So this has come through a variety of discussions and talking with other schools and how they're handling this and so forth, so this is a program, Navigate Through Sixty, they have other arms that we could explore in the future, we're not interested in it right now. We'd like to see how this goes. But that, that we could use, so when, um, it has a bunch of what I'm gonna call modules or mini lessons. And so we would have um, our counselors trained in how to run this and, and eventually Amy Elser too, so if a student is sent to the office and for ISS, let's say for excessive absences, okay, they have a module that they would have to complete before returning to class on, on the importance of that. More often where you can use it is so, if someone was in out of school suspension and maybe it was for vaping. Okay, or drooling, so right now, yes, they get a ticket if they get caught with one on campus. But if it was outside of school, they would get the ticket from law enforcement regardless, but we don't have any part of it, we get notified and they have to serve their time, well now to return. they have to serve their time. Well, now to return, they have modules to to support them in that and give them the importance of why they're in trouble, why it's dangerous, things like that beyond what we normally do. Um, if they got sent to the office and they're serving time for harassment, they have modules on that. So it's, it's a tool we're we're looking at. We've seen a few other schools use, but in talking, what can we do to support students? And rather than just saying, you were bad, sit in the corner. And then you return the next day and they sat there, maybe did or didn't accomplish anything for the day. It's something to maybe build some support. Provide them with something in expectation at a minimum of what you have to do for the day before you're gonna return to class. That's kind of the light version of what we would do with that.
So we would, we haven't done this before?
We have not.
Okay.
This would be new.
So if they don't complete it, they can't come back?
To, that's a great, we have that same thing. Now, out of school, let's say, and they can't come back, I don't know. But then would we return them to class or does that mean then they're gonna sit in the office for a day and have an additional day to complete this? Ideally, if they're in ISS, which is in school suspension, we at least can have someone check in or make sure they're working on it or a discussion. What if, what if they're refusing? Yeah, I I don't know. We'd have to look into that. But like we said, there's other punishments that kids refuse to do as well, and we have consequences we develop on a case by case basis there too. Um, I do think once we get into this, I don't know how much refusal other than highly repeat offenders will be, but those that do the occasional. Um, I don't anticipate the push back there. I think that'll be small. I do think it'll happen and we've but they have other issues going on if they're refusing something this simple when they get to that point. But it's more of, like we've talked about, you got a sixth grader. We've talked about this, that gets caught with a vape in school for the second time. So other than suspending them and the counselor talks through their feelings and they've gotten in trouble with law enforcement, what else do we have to, well, we really don't have anything. But they have modules and lessons designed to kind of coincide with with those instances to help us with that, you know, kind of reconciliation and remediation when they return back.
So this will be through?
This would be for the, the quote is for middle s- middle school and high school.
Middle school and high school.
Is my understanding.
We talked about that too.
Cause it was just the one building, but because what Stan pointed out to me, because we're under one roof here,
we could qualify for their one building subscription.
How would the others?
They're not from here and they don't know Sibley from
Right.
Sioux Falls, Sibley Ochin from Sioux Falls. So I made the comment, we're attached. She goes, I'm gonna put it all under one building.
Yeah.
That's what the lady told me.
What have other schools, you said other schools in the area have used it. What kind of success have they s- had with it?
So I say we got that, not that it's it's not been widespread by any means.
Okay.
Um, I think we initially, and not because of personnel there, but I think we initially got this idea from Emmitsburg.
Okay.
Um, and their counselor had a question. Uh, how this started, if I remember right, at the beginning of the year, their counselor had a question on something. So Mr. Janice had them reach out to Jillian.
Jillian.
And if I remember, that's how the ball got rolling. So it wasn't like George Little Rock or anyone local. She did look into it at one of her meetings and I thought there was one, and I couldn't even tell you who, maybe one other in the conference. But the ones that were familiar with it were a little farther reached from Northwest Iowa, honestly, like in Akron and in Emmitsburg and so forth that use this program, I should say. Others have different things they've used or have a um on staff or someone that reports a um school liaison officer through the local sheriff's office. We don't. That they provide some remediation there. Um, at Boyd and Hall, they have one that's paid for and M O C, so they use that for various similar to this, but it's direct with their school resource officer or liaison officer. So um, this would be just another way around that that we thought considering our needs would maybe fit that at the current time.
Any other comments, questions?
So once we pay this, there won't be another bill for three month, three years?
Three years.
Or else is is there a annual service?
My understanding is it's annual, the um Yes, my understanding is it's annual, that's what I said.
So the three thousand is for one year.
Correct. And obviously, we would look at whether we use that enough to feel and how that hap- how it was handled moving forward. Um, and yeah, a year from now, I probably wouldn't make the recommendation. It would be Mr. Hertz and Mrs. Klingenberg and this Mr. DeZale doing that, but did we get halfway in and realize it didn't have value or did we realize it was really good and we wanna continue? I I don't know that answer, but that's what we'd have to figure out.
Any other questions, comments? If not, would there be a motion?
So this would be, I guess I do have a question. Um, this would be I guess who who is the person that's gonna be in charge of doing this with the students? Like, here you go, you gotta do this, da da da, whatever, because I'd I would really hate to see it be strictly the counselor because that shuts the door to a lot of students wanting to go and seek that person out um to talk with them. Um, it it can really hinder that if it's uh behavioral. Um, academic, I can see where they can say, hey, let's talk about this. Not saying to cut the counselor out completely, but let that person in that role work more on choices and decision making and, like you said, that emotional part of it and and um to try to change behavior and choices. Whereas if it's like, well, you know, Mrs. Klingenberg makes me do this, then I'm kind of upset with Mrs. Klingenberg and I'm not gonna go talk to her really anymore anyway. You know what I mean?
I think you're asking two different questions. I think you're asking who's in charge of setting it up, and then what I hear is if they don't do it, who's the follow through?
Who's the person saying?
The council would not be a follow through.
Okay.
Um, person, that's
But I know, yeah, I know they keep a lot of data just from when I filled in for Jillian. She keeps a lot of data as far as, you know, what students, what they're gone for and you know, all of those sorts of things. So I'm sure she can see a need for something like this and such better use of time than I'm in ISS with my head down on my, on the desk for the day. It has an expectation.
Right. I, yeah, I would say that that'd be like any discipline thing of of not completing if the council would not do that.
Okay.
In terms of using the data, I view them to be a part of that.
Mm-hmm.
The requirement, I think, would fall back to building principles more than likely.
Principles or, yeah, at rest or something, yeah.
Yeah, or Mrs. Elser. I can't fully tell you the process because we haven't done it, but that's how I would envision it.
That was just my only. I make a motion to approve it. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of suite three sixty um for three thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose, motion carried. Item G, consider approval of activity fund account redistribution. And Kendra has information on this?
These are just clubs that really don't exist anymore, but they had a balance in them, and that's been on our audit um last year and actually the year before too for FACS um club. And since they really don't exist, the board just needs to approve that we can um distribute the funds to another um somewhere else that needs it in the activity fund.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the activity fund account redistribution as presented. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose, motion carried. Item H, consider approval of adult lunch price for twenty three, twenty four.
Federal government set, or excuse me, the USDA sets this amount every year and you have to approve it, but it is the amount that it is. Because it's uh four eighty four, uh food service is reporting that other districts are using four eighty five to avoid using pennies in cash transactions. So it's recommended to approve the adult meal rate at four dollars and eighty five cents.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the new adult adult lunch price of four eighty five for twenty three, twenty four. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose, motion carries. Item I, consider approval of resolution to transfer funds from general fund to activity fund for safety equipment.
And this is an option that you have uh on a yearly basis to uh recoup some of the expenses uh from the activity fund. So um there's a resolution in there that has to be read and the amount that they are uh asking for is four thousand nine hundred eighty seven dollars and twenty one cents.
As far as Iowa Code provides, school districts greater flexibility to transfer excess funds to other assistified processes, whereas the board is consultation with its community has determined that funds of four thousand nine hundred eighty seven dollars and twenty one cents in the general fund shall be transferred to the student activity fund to purchase protective and safety equipment required for any extra curricular or inter-school ballistic athletic contest. I should read this before. Or competition that is sponsored or administered by the organization as currently defined by Iowa Code.
I'll second that, Greg.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution to transfer funds from the general fund to the activity fund for safety equipment of four thousand nine hundred eighty seven dollars and twenty one cents. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose, motion carried. Item J, consider approval of engineer for voice evacuation fire alarm system project.
So E D A, who is the engineer that has handled most of the building projects for the last several decades, has um put together the estimate on the voice evacuation fire alarm system that's required to be installed. Um, they're estimating two hundred forty thousand dollars to complete the installation plus their twenty two thousand dollar engineering fee. Um, and that's well under the four hundred thousand that we will have saved up at the time of that the five year variance expires. Um, so again, the twenty two thousand covers everything um from uh the beginning now through uh through completion of the proj- completion of the project. Um, so tonight you just need to consider the engineering fee if you approve it. E D A puts together drawings, they set up the bidding process to get all the um contractors involved and and move forward. So I recommend hiring E D A to manage the project for a cost of twenty two thousand dollars.
Is this in place in the elementary already?
No, but there have not been, there's not been new construction to require it by COVID. The only reason that it's is up here is because
Right. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty two thousand dollars for the um installation fee.
Engineering fee.
Engineering fee.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the engineer for voice evacuation fire alarm system project of twenty two thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose, motion carried. Item K, consider approval of retention bonus for food service employees.
So the food service enterprise account has a significant surplus at this point and and a lot of that is due to the past two years of meals being um subsidized by the USDA. And so they receive full reimbursement price for every meal served regardless of um student uh level of payment or free and reduced rate. So they have, they have a lot to spend down and they have things on the agenda to approve tonight and they're gonna continue to add to those. But one of the things that they're uh they would like to see is for uh those employees that uh went through COVID and and went through the, they've gone through the summer lunch program, they've worked shorthanded um for a couple of years now. Um, one of the things they'd like to do to spend down that uh enterprise account is to offer a retention bonus. Now, I did um one of the cons- the only concern that I had is that if you offer a bonus, you have to offer it. It can't be, well, we just want this person and this person. Um, so uh they proposed a fifteen hundred dollar bonus and and I would recommend approving that.
How many employees?
Uh, it would be um eight. There's, there are seven um uh seven hourly workers plus the director, so eight total.
And are we still looking for?
No, we are full.
We are full.
And food service.
So everybody that is on staff right now would get the retention bonus?
No, we have somebody who wouldn't know. I thought that was on the agenda.
Food service.
Well, we have, like, people have retired, like Janice left and um
And maybe we replaced them.
Gidget, but yeah, we've replaced, um, we have replaced everybody. Um, plus filled in the last open spot that was left.
Any other questions, comments? Now, would there be a motion or?
I'm not sure how to phrase this, but is there when we, when we have approved raises in the past, has food service been involved in that?
The same as other support staff, yes.
Support staff. Are we going to create, are we kind of opening a can of worms by doing this? Not saying that they shouldn't just, that they don't deserve it for being here and being through that. But are we going to have other positions in support staff or anything, say, well, we've stuck it out?
Right, the, and the
That would be my only concern.
Right, and I, and I understand that. There probably will be some of those concerns. However, the enterprise account is separate from the general fund. If if the board felt that it was in the best interests of keeping staff, that that be applied to to everybody else, then that would be a general fund decision. That would, that would have to be discussed. The enterprise account is separate. They can hand, they, they're in a position where they have to spend, spend it down um by regulation. And uh they wanna reward the, reward the people that have been there as one of the ways to reduce those, reduce that surplus. So I mean, that's, that's the explanation, fair or not, that's um, I I can understand where people would
Yeah, that's, that would be my only.
Do their wages come out of the enterprise now?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, foods, anybody that works in food service, anything that happens in food service comes out of that enterprise account. There's no general fund money spent. They are their own business under our umbrella.
And if I remember correctly, we don't have any control really of what goes into that enterprise fund because the pricing for meals and adult meals and whether the
The ad- the adult meal is set by the USDA.
Yeah.
You still set the breakfast and lunch prices and milk prices.
But isn't there a, don't we have to be over a minimum? Like, for example, could we go in, could we go in and say, well, we've got such a surplus, we're gonna give a dollar fifty meals for the kids throughout the year? I thought there was something in there that there had to be at least a minimum that we would charge.
That I, that I don't know, Kendra.
I wouldn't recommend doing that, a dollar fifty meals.
No, I know, but
Since the costs have gone up so much.
Right.
I think it's just the the adult meal price.
The adult meal price has that limit. I I think you can do whatever.
I thi- I don't think there's a set amount.
But you would not
Student ones.
But we did not increase, recommend an increase and and the other meal and milk prices for next year because we don't need to generate more funds. If if we needed to generate more funds to do more things, then that's where the meal price goes up because that's the way we cover that.
For some reason, I thought that there was a, we were dictated as to a minimum of what we could charge for student meals, but maybe that's not the case.
I'm not aware of that. We can look into it.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. So what are our thoughts on the retention bonus?
You can think about it, table it and, and move next month.
I think, I mean, since their wages come out of there anyway, don't. The bonus comes out of there too, so I mean, I don't, I mean, other people can correct, but it's not, it's, it's different money. I move to approve the retention bonus for food service employees.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the retention bonus for food service employees of fifteen hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Item L, consider approval of projects, first coral music storage.
So in the high school choir room, there are three spaces designated for practice rooms and end up being storage with some room to get in and practice. Those rooms right now are full of file cabinets on both sides with their music files. The purchase of these files will be similar to what was installed in the band room when it was, when it was remodeled. But it will move all of the music storage into one side of one of those rooms.
So it's going to stay in the room, one of the rooms.
Yep, it'll stay in the room with the rooms and all the file cabinets go away. So then all of that extra space is opened up for whatever they want to use it for. So I would recommend approving, um, the bid from Winger in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty two dollars and sixty six cents.
And this is save Pipple.
Yes.
Money. Any questions, comments?
I'll make the motion to approve the bid from Winger Corporation for the music library storage.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the coral music storage purchase. Library storage in the amount of fifteen thousand seven thirty two sixty six. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Uh, moving down to roofing.
Uh, the high school kitchen and commons area roof has really gotten bad over the last couple of years. And the warranty has expired, so we're past the ability to patch it and, and not, not deal with it. The, uh, fight, or, excuse me, the facilities committee recommended moving this project forward. Um, we have two other roof projects that will be moving, uh, forward, but they'll be after this one. This is the most, um, important at the moment. So again, it's over the kitchen and the commons roof, comes with a twenty, twenty year guarantee. And they'll be able to come in and complete that, um, as soon as Greg lets them know. So I recommend approving the McDonald roofing to replace this roof, um, at ninety six thousand one hundred eighty nine dollars.
Make a motion to approve the roofing project.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the McDonald roofing, um, project on the roof over the high school kitchen and commons that'll cost ninety six thousand one hundred eighty nine dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Number three, middle school band instrument storage.
So the, um, on the wall of Mr. Jacob's, Jacobs' room, where all of the instruments are kept, those are original to the middle school. They've been there the entire time and they have served their purpose very well. But they are, um, on the outside, they're, they're busted, they're just, they're wearing out and there's, it's, it's dangerous for kids with splinters and different things and catches their clothes. So it's time for, it's time for new instrument storage down there. Um, there were two, there were two bids, um, uh, received. One included instrument, there's a, down there on his wall, there is the instrument storage and then there's cabinet storage, fold, like closet cabinet storage with the whiteboard or in his case, the smart board, uh, in that area. So the cabinets are fine, the smart board is fine, it's the instrument storage that needs to get fixed. And so the, um, the less expensive of the two bids was from Winger, which I was very happy to see because they're the, they're the industry leader, um, in, in this area. Uh, for them to come in as the lowest bid, it was very good to see. But, uh, the, um, they came in and measured and took care of all of the stuff with Kelly and, and, uh, they're ready to move forward. So I recommend approving the quote from Winger Corporation for the middle school instrument storage. Uh, twenty nine thousand four hundred thirty seven dollars and fifty one cents.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, instrument storage project for the middle school. Twenty nine thousand four hundred thirty seven dollars, fifty one cents.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the middle school band instrument storage as stated in the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of purchases over superintendent threshold, number one in the food service area.
Um, so this is, uh, these are requisitions for two thousand twenty three, twenty four. So things that are approved tonight will be ordered to be here after July first, so it comes out of next year's budget. So in food service, the first item is a hydrovection oven. And the bid, the bid matrix for each of these, uh, items is attached here so you can see what bids were received. But it's recommended to approve purchasing the hydrovection oven from Rapids Wholesale in the amount of twenty four thousand six dollars, seventy one cents.
Make a motion to approve the hydrovection oven from Rapids Wholesale in the amount of twenty four thousand six dollars and seventy one cents.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the hydrovection oven purchase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried.
Middle school needs a new dishwasher and it's recommended to approve the dishwasher purchase from Hobart Sales Incorporated in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred sixty eight dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the dishwasher for the middle school. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Skillet.
Yeah, the tilt skillet, so it's a very large thing that they, that they can cook items in and then tilt it to drain off, like if it's hamburger, they can drain off the grease or whatever. So it's, um, this is for the high school to replace what was already there. And it's recommended to approve the purchase of the tilt skillet from Rapids Wholesale in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars, sixty one cents.
So, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the tilt skillet. Any further discussion?
Are these prices installed then?
Yes. All right, hearing no more, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Moving to the maintenance department, floor scrubbers.
Uh, floor scrubbers have been requested by the maintenance department. Hilliard has done a great job of providing us with equipment options and cleaning options that allow us to get the job done more efficiency, efficiently for less product cost, which is a great thing. Quote is included there for you, uh, it's recommended to approve the purchase from Hilliard in the amount of eleven thousand two thirty nine and sixty seven cents.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the floor scrubbers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Technology department.
Okay, so, uh, this is the time of year that we always consider the renewal or the refresh of, um, student and staff machines, so this year is a staff year. What Tony told me last week is that for students, this is actually, um, not a renewal year. And so we had budgeted for student and staff machines to be replaced. All of the student machines will continue for another year. So the only things that are on here tonight are the staff, um, or the teacher MacBooks, which are on there for one hundred thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty eight dollars. That's the best price that we can get because Apple gives the discount for education, um, that isn't available anywhere else. Uh, for the Chromebooks, um, they want to replace the Chromebooks for the paraprofessionals. And, uh, the quote that we did not receive yet, doesn't look like we received the other two quotes, but the quote, um, from Trafara for the Chromebooks is the one that we would like to, um, have approved. And that's in the amount of twenty four thousand forty five dollars. So the, uh, that's the recommendation you see there, it was going to be determined today. So I do not have a total amount. But they're from two separate companies, so there, uh, you may need to be two separate motions.
It can be together, the, um, MacBook Airs for the price that's up there and then the Trafara is twenty four thousand forty five dollars.
Okay. Recommended. So just read both numbers in your motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the MacBook Airs for one hundred and thirty thousand dollars eight, one hundred thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty eight dollars and the Chromebooks for twenty four thousand forty five dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the staff laptops as presented in the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. I demand consider approval of disposal, disposal of obsolete property. Equipment, sorry, equipment.
Uh, so we have a bus, uh, bus number four that is ready to go out of service and Amos feels we'll get a better price for it at auction than we will for scrap. So, um, it's recommended to allow him to contact Closet Realty to put bus number four on auction.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to put, uh, bus number four on auction to dispose of the equipment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried.
And then the furniture, um, is, uh, special education furniture that we've had for the past several years. And we would like to send this, these items to auction as well to see if there's interest.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, um, put the special education furniture on auction also as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Item O, consider approval of twenty three, twenty four student handbooks, teacher work rules, faculty handbook, support staff handbook, and special education associate handbook.
All of the changes have been listed in the, in the books. One, one thing that will, um, that will come up later this summer is, we have not received guidance on policy for maintaining the supply of Narcan or Naloxone. And so if, when, when that comes in, then, um, Nurse Ashley has language written up that, that should probably go into the handbook, she'll want to consider that. So you may need to amend, um, the handbooks later on, but we don't have that information at this time. And don't know when that's going to come in. So these are the, these are the updates for next school year and if there aren't any questions, um, I'd recommend approving.
Could I add one thing? The only major change between the middle school and the high school, the one I wanted to point out in the high school handbook, in case you hear about it so that you know the requirements on the alternative program for attendance. It's been before and with N C C, it's, it's about attendance and hours per week. That's not very efficient and it was hard to keep up on because N C C doesn't always consistently staff that. They've had a variety of people going through and we may not hear about that. But one of the things is you can meet the attendance requirement through hours and not necessarily get a lot of work done. So that's why it's not going to hours, it's going to go per term. And they basically have, the alternative schools, six terms per year, three a semester. And so that's why the requirement will now be to complete a minimum of two courses per term. Um, basically if you do the math and that, that'd be like taking six classes all year long. Okay, we require, if you were here full time, we required you'd have seven periods filled. So that is not excessive by any means. And if you're at a minimum, just trying to keep up with your peers in an alternative school, you would have to do that anyway. And the idea at alternative schools, either something happened, you go there or you're significantly behind. If you're just doing the bare minimum, you're not catching up anyway. So just so that gives you a frame of reference of why that's changed, two courses per term. What does that mean? But that gives you a guideline, that'd be what we would expect here anyway, and I don't feel that is unrealistic.
Any other comments, questions on the proposed handbooks? If not, would there be a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the revisions of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four student handbook, teacher work rules, faculty handbook, support staff handbook, and special education associate handbook as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the handbooks and work rules as presented and stated in the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of public, public records custodian.
This is an annual appointment, currently Kendra and I serve as the custodians of public records. And, um, there's no reason for that not to continue. But we want to use school business official and superintendent in your motion so that you don't have to do it again next month.
Make a motion to approve the school business official and superintendent to continue to serve as the custodians of public records.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the custodian of public records as stated in the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Item Q, consider approval of adding preschool, early childhood, special education teacher for twenty three, twenty four.
So the current, the roster, the way it looks now, um, we need somebody else in the room with Natasha. We won't have a third room to use, but for her to have another teacher in the room full time will help, um, provide the services to that roster and, and not, not put it all on her. And we have, you have room to hire because we're not hiring back as many teachers for this coming year with reductions we've made, or attrition that we've used. So, uh, I recommend ad, um, being able to advertise for that teaching position. And we may get it, we may not, but we want to put it out there that we're looking.
And would this come out of special education funding?
Some of it would.
Okay.
It just depends, uh, um, part of the day comes out of special ed, part of it doesn't.
Okay.
Do you see those numbers kind of continuing or is that kind of hard to estimate for them?
Boy, I don't, I don't know.
They're, they're growing immensely, the E C S E population. This past year we had eleven. I talked with the A E A consultants that work very closely in, in, on those ages. And then say, a typical preschool room with inclusion serves three to four. And so we're about three to four times that, you know what I mean? So, um, there, and we graduated, um, five to the kin- from preschool to kindergarten. So we're starting the year at six, which is high, I mean, twice as high as what the, kind of the recommended is. And then there's three or four that are kind of in the early access program through the A E A that are kind of on the radar for students that may start as three year olds.
Any other comments, questions? Any other comments, questions? If not, would there be a motion?
I'll make a motion to add a preschool, early childhood, special education, education teacher for twenty-three, twenty-four. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the adding of a preschool, early childhood, special education teacher for twenty-three, twenty-four, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Item R, consider approval of resignations.
And I see what you're talking about now with Janice, so she resigned right after the last board meeting, so she had, she's been done for a little bit. Um, but anyway, um, the list is there, I'd recommend approving the resignations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resignations as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Item S, consider approval of new contracts.
Couple of highlights here, Julie Swenson would be joining us from HMS, um. The, uh, their board has not met to consider her resignation to come here, so, um, she is listed there pending release. Uh, from her contract because they have signed contracts for next year. Um, we are still looking for a K-six ELA TLC curriculum team leader, uh, so that's why that position is not listed there. Other than that. Recommend approving all the new contracts.
I recommend approving the contracts as stated.
Recommend or move?
Make a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And it was seconded, okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the new contracts as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? All right, moving down to item seven, additional items, uh, next meeting, we can view that. Um, before we get to talking points, I do want to recognize, um, Mr. Craig, this will be his last meeting. He'll be moving on to, uh, the Cardinal School District and I would just like to tell him thank you very much. For what you've done for Sibley or Cheaton.
Thank you.
And wish you the best of luck in your next district.
Thank you.
All right, other talking points?
Good reports from the principals, both principals.
Yeah.
A little bit of a shocker with our insurance, but for everybody that lives in the real world right now, I don't know that it'll be a total shock.
With a lot of students recognized, yeah.
As usual.
Yeah.
Any other talking points? All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Been a long meeting.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried.